Okay, our first item of business is public comment. I have Leona Schumacher signed up. Yeah, pull down the helper outline. If you would introduce yourself and your board or address, neighborhood, whatever you like.
Okay, my name is Leona Schumacher. I live in the south side of Salem on Crestview Drive. I don't know about anybody else in here, but I thought the card that was sent to everybody was a little bit hilarious.
Ms. Schumacher, this is, this gets a little arcane, but this is the Housing Authority. So what you wanted to sign up for, I believe, was the public comment to the city council.
That's what I signed up for.
Well, we got you on the Housing Authority too, so I'll make sure you're on the city council agenda.
I'm sorry, you're not speaking loud enough?
I'm sorry, I'll make sure you're on the city council list, but this is for Housing Authority issues, so.
Oh, okay.
That's, I apologize, these lists can get confusing, so we'll catch you on that list.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilor Nanki, the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I would move the consent calendar.
Second by Benards. Mr. Wilch, do you have any information to report?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chair, and Ms. Nurse. Wanted to mention two quick points. One is in the program management report under the business profile. We've tried our best to discuss the difference between affordable housing and public housing, and how the vouchers are integral in the community to serving the lowest income population, and happy to take any questions on that if you have any thoughts. Just want to point that out. Secondly, I know there's been some discussion about the resident commissioner for the board, and we have historically worked through our resident advisory board, which are public housing residents who step up to participate on advisory things like reviewing the PHA plan for the public housing, et cetera. And so, we talked with those individuals, and folks often are interested, but I think it's apparent that they haven't thrown their hat in the ring, if you will, and so, working with Casey, I've provided him with a list of our current resident advisory board, and hoping that perhaps a more formal outreach from the commission for a prospective resident commissioner might be more effective than we've been able to be. So I just want to point that out, that it's not lost on us, that we're, don't have a resident commissioner on the board as of yet.
Thank you, Mr. Wilch.
Thank you.
Chair, Councilor Dickey.
Thank you. I guess, a question, I don't know if this is for city manager, or who, but I'd be curious to know what kind of options we might have, or if, I know we've done a lot of outreach to try to find a resident commissioner, and that not happening as quickly as we'd like, what other options might we have? Do we have to look at changing our charter? Do we, or what, you know, what are those things that we might need to do to make that happen? And I know there might be a few different options we can be looking at, so.
Yes, I think if the commission wanted to, you could redefine the criteria for a member of the public serving, so it might be someone who, you know, has expressed interest in affordable housing, or has a background in affordable housing, or have been in development of it, or some other, you know, form of interest in that very important subject area that we have, and that might be more effective than the process we have right now.
Commissioner Tesla.
Go on. Tesla. Known me for years. Anyway, I guess I'm a, I'm a little concerned about losing that resident voice, you know? I think it's really important that people who are served by the Housing Authority be represented on the Housing Authority. And, you know, I was reading your report this week about the person, the very remarkable person who got a GED and has two small children, and just amazing story. Like, a person like that, that's a perfect opportunity for them to get a little leadership experience, and serve on the commission, and bring that, you know, that, that attitude into the commission. And, I don't know, I know it's hard to recruit people to be on boards and commissions, but I just, I would be concerned if we, if we lost that, because I think that's a vital voice of the people that we serve, and we need to have that voice on the commission. I'd actually like to see more than one, but that's my druthers.
Okay.
May I?
Yes.
Thank you. And there isn't a specific number for the resident advisory board. It's fairly open from a HUD standpoint, and we've generally had about nine or 10, which isn't a particularly large pool to recruit from. I agree, a lot of our clients show interest, but they have very busy lives, and we're all, wherever we come from, we're all challenged from time to time, and so I think that there's always a good intention, but for some reason, they're focused on making their own lives better, and perhaps not serving on a board. But I think that coming from staff where we can encourage them, but really aren't in a position, for lack of a better word, to recruit them, whereas the commission may be more able to do that, I would suggest that we start with that, and go with the resident advisory board, and look for a public housing resident first, and perhaps the outreach from the, the commission would, would perhaps have better luck than we've had.
Any other comments, questions? Commissioner Dickey?
I guess, just to clarify, when I was asking for a range of options, I meant for anything we could do to get, you know, whether that would be maybe not a resident, but also could be a resident, maybe we need to look at a different pool of residents. It sounds like it's a pretty small pool to choose from, maybe there's another way to reach out to more residents, and change that requirement, so that we could get someone who might be interested, who, to make them aware. So I'm just looking for, you know, any number of things that we might be able to do.
All right. Any further questions? Anything else, Mr. Wilch?
No, thank you.
Okay, motion on the floor is for the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We have no special orders of business, no unfinished business, no new business. Without objection, we're adjourned.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome. We will now begin, in just a moment, the actual formal city council meeting for this evening. Give everybody a chance to get machinery reset. So we're set there. Reset. All right, I'll call to order the meeting, and ask the recorder to please call the roll.
Councilor Bennett?
Here.
Councilor Tesler?
President.
Councilor Nanki?
Here.
Councilor Clausen is absent. Councilor Dickey?
Here.
Councilor Thomas?
Here.
Councilor Benars?
Here.
Councilor Clem is absent. Mayor Peterson?
Here. Thank you very much. All right, Councilor Bennett, would you like to move for the approval of additions or deletions to the agenda? I see kind of a thick packet here.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move additions, deletions, and revisions to this evening's agenda.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, and moved by Councilor Bennett, seconded by Councilor Nanki, to approve the additions, deletions, and revisions to the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, we have time for council comment. I'm going to open council comment with a request to staff. We've had quite a few communications from the community regarding the downtown and, and the city parking plan, parking recommendations that are coming forward from city council. And so, we've discussed with staff, asking staff to arrange for some additional open houses beyond what we had already posted, and I'd like to see those in visible area downtown, and at various times in the day, and in the evening, so that the public and business owners and property owners might be able to have a little more time to spend with counselors, who would be willing to attend, and also with staff.
Yes. Yes, we will arrange that. So we'll be working on a strategy in the next couple of days.
Great, thank you. Okay. Other councilor comments?
I'll just make one.
Councilor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My, just, I just wanted to note for the council that the legislature signee died today, so personally, I get a lot of free time out of this. So I'm really excited, but just let you know that congestion on Court Street clear, and State Street clears up now.
All right. Thank you. Councilor Benars?
I just wanted to take note that as of July 1st, we have lost a few of the staff that normally sit at our head table, unfortunately, and we have gained a new face at the head of our council.
Yes, we have.
I am not familiar with the name, but I know he's our attorney now.
If I could, our interim city attorney is Dan Atchison, and he's been in our legal office for some time now, and so we're very pleased to have him in this role, and our interim community development director, if you want to raise your hand, Glen is Glen Gross.
Okay, welcome aboard. All right, other councilor comments? Seeing none, we'll proceed for public comment. I see no one signed up for public comment for items other than public hearings and deliberations. We do have a public hearing coming up, so for this, no one has signed up. Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Councilor Bennett, would you like to introduce a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the consent calendar, and would like the record to note on 3.3A, Councilor Dickey recuses herself.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second? It's been moved by Councilor Bennett, and seconded by Councilor Nanki, to move the staff recommendations on the item, action items on the consent calendar, noting that Councilor Dickey notes 3.3A to recuse herself. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We will now proceed to the public hearing on the proposed street light and neighborhood street maintenance fee. I believe we have a staff report.
Madam Mayor, while he's getting set up, I'll go ahead and introduce the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony on a proposed fee that could be attached to the city's utility bill that would pay for street light services and additional neighborhood street maintenance.
Thank you very much.
So Mayor, Mark Bechtel from Public Works and Transportation, Transportation and Parks is going to make the presentation.
Okay. You ready? I thought maybe he was waiting for the screen.
I'm waiting for the other screen to light up here.
Oh, okay, okay.
If it doesn't come up, we can just go ahead with this one.
Okay. I'll tell you what, we'll get started, and if y'all look at the screen over here, we'll get started. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Mark Bechtel, I am the Parks and Transportation Services Manager for Salem Public Works, and the issue we bring forward to you for public hearing tonight is a proposed street light and neighborhood street maintenance fee. There's some key issues that we'd like to cover in tonight's presentation, some basic questions, and at the end of those basic questions, I'd like to talk about the public involvement, public involvement effort we've had to date, and some specific questions and concerns that have come up. First question is, why do we need a fee? We need a fee due to a combination of several factors. One is insufficient funding, both from our state highway funds that we rely on, about three-quarters of our street maintenance comes, funding comes from our state highway fund allocation, as well as decreased general fund support, which has led us to a $1 million shortfall that we are expecting to have, here we go, in, beginning in 2014. This is on top of an already shortfall we have in providing services for street maintenance. We need about $5.6 million a year in addition to what we currently have, to provide the street maintenance services to maintain our street system. So we're already running a service deficit, and then we'll have a cash deficit of $1 million beginning in 2014. Another reason for a fee is that our street light system, which we pay for with our state highway fund allocation, is using resources that could be used for street maintenance. And then finally, we desire to have a street light system that is efficient and energy efficient, which means converting those street lights to LED fixtures is something that'd be desirable. A little bit more information on, on our revenue trends. If you look at the lines on that graph, the green line represents our total revenue, and the blue line represents how much we get from state highway funds, and the red line is our general fund transfer. And the general fund comes from our water sewer franchise fees, that's a portion of which are devoted for streets. If you look at the trend we have right now, the green line is the combination of this line and this line together. We had a big dip in revenues at the height of the recession. The legislature helped us out with the passage of House Bill 2001, which increased the gas tax by six cents a gallon, and we were able to see some increase in our gas tax revenues. At the same time, the recession hit the city's general fund very hard, and we have seen a decrease in the amount of money that has been transferred from the city's general fund into, into street maintenance. So the combination is a relatively flat amount of revenue coming into street maintenance. This line is where we're at today, and I would tell you, based on our revenues to date, we're looking at about $100,000 less than anticipated to end our fiscal year. So we'll be starting the fiscal year $100,000 less than we anticipated, which means really we're looking at almost a $1.1 million deficit by the end of, of next fiscal year. You put on top of the issues we have of decreasing or flat revenues, we have an aging city infrastructure, we have increases in our personnel costs, our material costs continue to rise. A ton of asphalt today costs three times more than what it cost just seven years ago. And we also are paying high fuel prices for our vehicles, and, and electricity costs for our streetlights. A little bit about our streetlight system. Our streetlight system has about 10,500 streetlights. They are largely high-pressure sodium fixtures, which means they are traditional streetlights. They're fairly energy hungry, and we have a variety of pole types, from wood to metal to aluminum to fiberglass. About a third of our streetlights are owned by either PGE or Salem Electric, the other two-thirds are owned by the city of Salem. We spend $1.34 million a year in our state highway funds to power those lights, to maintain them, and to replace poles when they come to their end of their life. To convert that streetlight system to energy-efficient LED fixtures would cost about $3 million. LED fixtures last three times longer than a standard so, high-pressure sodium lamp, so they're expected to last 21 years instead of seven years, and they consume about half as much electricity as a high-pressure sodium lamp. What happens if we do not receive additional revenue in street maintenance? Beginning in 2014, we will not be able to do any planned maintenance on neighborhood streets, and I define neighborhood streets as your residential local streets, and those collector streets that serve those neighborhoods. We would only be able to go into those neighborhoods and do emergency repairs on the pavements and the sidewalks. We would have to focus the resources that we have on maintaining our arterial street system, and those collectors that serve that part of the system. Our sidewalk repairs would be reduced to just the high priority compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, and we would not be able to perform any preventative maintenance on city streets. In fact, we really have not done any preventative maintenance for several years. There's other increases that we would have in responding to downed signs, traffic inquiries and complaints, and we'd have less technical support. Ultimately, this is the result of the fact that we would have to lay off about seven to eight full-time career positions in our division. One of the questions that frequently comes up is why not use some of the bond funds from the night, for the 2008 Streets and Bridges Bond Measure for street maintenance? And the answer to that question is, the voters approved a project list for the use of those bonds back in 2008. We are just about completed, or we are completing the, the last parts of those, those projects, and we'll do so through 2015. But we are prohibited by law from using those bond funds for routine operations and maintenance. So the issue comes of how to raise revenue. One of, one of the ideas that we've been looking at is the imposition of a fee. There are two fee alternatives that can be considered. One fee, we call Fee Alternative A, would bring in $2.6 million a year in revenue. It would pay for a comprehensive street light program, and we'll talk about what that is in a minute. Neighborhood street maintenance program, and all, all other transportation programs would remain at status quo. A lesser alternative, Fee Alternative B, would bring in $1.9 million a year in revenue, would give us a comprehensive street light program, would not fund a neighborhood's street maintenance program, but would allow us to at least maintain our current services as they are today, because it would fill the million-dollar shortfall that we have in our, in our budget that we're anticipating. A little bit about what a comprehensive streetlight program would entail. It would include basic operations for our streetlights, electricity and maintenance. It would allow us to pay the debt service to fund a conversion of our streetlight system to energy-efficient LED fixtures. It would allow us to replace more aggressively poles that have ended their lifespan, and then be able to add streetlights in neighborhoods where they're currently missing, or they're underserved. And finally, we would have a small capital reserve that would allow us to replace LED streetlights as they burn out over time, as well as there is a certain wattage of streetlight that there is not a current conversion for from high-pressure sodium to LED, and when those conversions are available on the market, we could use that reserve to then convert those streetlights to LEDs. The neighborhood street maintenance program would bring in about, under Fee Alternative A, would bring in about $1 million a year additional for street maintenance, and that would allow us to go back into the neighborhoods and start doing street maintenance that, like we used to. And many of you may remember when we'd go into a neighborhood, and we would seal up the cracks in the pavements of your local street, and then put a thin slurry down on top of the street, which would extend the life of that pavement by anywhere from seven to 10 years. Very cost-effective method of maintaining streets. It is a lot more expensive if we have to come in and dig out and repave your street, or overlay your street, than it is to do maintenance on the street. What we would do with that million dollars is about 50% of it would be used for preventative maintenance, just what I described, the slurry work, this crack sealing, chip seals. About 25% of the funding would go towards corrective maintenance, which is pothole patching, dig-out repairs, what we call Class A repairs, grinds and inlays, thin patches, thin overlays, and maintenance overlays. The, the neighborhood sidewalk program, which is currently focusing on corner curb ramps for compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, about 15% of the resources would be available to go back in and start doing more systematic sidewalk repair in the neighborhoods. And then finally, we would recommend about 10% of the funding going towards some of our oldest streets, which are our concrete streets. Those are streets that are very expensive to repair, and we simply do not even attempt to fix them right now because of their expense, but this would allow us to go in and to dig out those concrete panels that are shattered, and put in new concrete panels, as well as rebuilding small neighborhood bridges and, and small sections of asphalt street. What would Fee Alternative look like, calculated? First, we would use the same system that we use in our city utility bill, but I want to stress right now that this fee is not at all linked to the water sewer fund. The fees that would be collected through, through this process would go to the Fund 155, which is the Public Works Fund, the streets component of that fund, and is, and it is not involved in all with the water sewer fund. What we are proposing using is the same customer classification system that you see on our utility bill, because we are recommending using the, the city utility bill as a way to collect this fee. But I, that's a very important thing I want to point out, because we've received a lot of comment about the confusion that there may be with the water sewer fund. What we would do, under Fee Alternative A, is single-family residences would pay $4 a month, and as you can see, the, the vast majority of the accounts, utility accounts, are single-family residential accounts, so a small change in this amount can make a big change in revenue, just based on the number of accounts. Duplexes would pay twice that amount, triplexes, three times the amount, fourplexes, and then you get into what we call the larger or commercial categories, which includes multifamily housing units of five units or more, and then commercial meter accounts, industrial and public. All told, that brings in $2.6 million a year, a $1.6 million for streetlights, and a million for street maintenance. Under the Fee Alternative B, which is just the streetlight fee, it is a smaller amount for single-family residential, $2.80, going down through the same process again, with the larger accounts paying $13.50 a month. Brings in a total of 1.9 million, 1.6 million for streetlights. It capitalizes that small reserve with a total of 1.9. How would the, how would the, how would the fee be collected? We are recommending that it be collected as a separate line item on the city's utility bill. The pro for that is it saves on printing, postage, and processing costs, because we already send that bill out. One of the cons to that is that, as I mentioned before, there, it does create some confusion as to if this is all linked with the water sewer fund. Another option that council could consider is to bill this fee separately, to mail it separately, to utility customers once or twice a year. There'd be less confusion about what the purpose of the fee was about, but it would cost us additional administrative costs with the printing, and the mailing, and the processing. Also, there is a larger potential for non-payment for those who do not wish to pay the fee, which would involve us having to put those accounts into collections. I'm talking a little about the public involvement effort. At council's direction, we undertook a fairly extensive effort to make the public aware of this idea, this concept that we're looking at. We made 23 presentations between April 1st and July 2nd to 23 different organizations, to 383 people. We put up an internet website, which had an email comment box. We mailed out 39,202 postcards to utility customers for the city. As of 5:00 PM today, we have received a total of 200 pieces of written, written electronic testimony, 29 in support of the fee, 156 in opposition, and 15 not expressing an opinion either way. We've answered over 60 telephone calls, and we've had quite a bit of local media coverage. Some issues and specific concerns. One has come about how to, how could the council deal with the issue of low-income and disabled customer, customers, and could there be discounts for those who qualify for that? Currently, the fixed portion of the wastewater portion of the water sewer bill applies a 35% discount. 35% discount to that portion of the bill if you meet the criteria of being a head of household that's either disabled or senior citizen, and you make, I believe it's 30% of the, of the...
Median family income.
Median family income, yes, thank you. So if it was, if you were a household of two, that would be $14,400 a year. Okay? So one option that the council could consider would be to, if you qualified for that discount on your water sewer bill, you could qualify for that same discount on this fee. Another issue that has come up is what about those folks that live on private streets, streets that are not publicly, they're not public streets, they're privately owned, that have their own streetlight systems, and they pay their homeowners associations for street maintenance and light fees. And that also includes mobile home parks. One of the things the council would want to consider is would we want to charge the full fee or a portion of the fees or waive a portion of the fees due to the fact that they are already paying for streetlights and street maintenance? One thing about mobile home parks is they work off of a master meter, most of them, which means they would be treated as an apartment complex of five or more units. So if it's either $13.50 a month or $16 a month, that's what the entire mobile home park would pay unless each of those mobile homes has their own water meter, in which case they would be treated like any other residents in the city of Salem, single-family One of the questions that's come up is why do we give the multifamily complexes of five units or more kind of a break? And why do commercial, industrial and public uses have a flat fee? And it's simply because we are using the customer classifications that we have in the water sewer bill under that particular fee alternative. Large apartment complexes work off a master meter, and so we do not have an easy means to charge a per-unit cost for each individual complex. Also, our departing city attorney, has departed, he gave his opinion that if we charged apartment complexes a fee based on the exact number of units that could be possibly construed as a property tax, which we do not want this to become, because then that puts us into a whole different arena with Measure 5, Measures 47 and 50. And so we wanted to make sure that the larger apartment complexes that work off of master meters are discharged a flat fee. Now, council could decide what that, if that fee should be larger or smaller, but that was the recommendation, that it be a flat fee. What about those who currently live in areas without streetlights? As mentioned before, one of the things this fee would fund is the ability to install streetlights in neighborhoods where they're missing or where they're underserved. We would work towards getting those streetlights installed in the neighborhoods that have been missing them the longest. So if you're an older neighborhood that has been missing streetlights for a long, long, long time, you would go to the top of the list, and the newer neighborhoods that are missing streetlights would wait a little bit. But our goal would be to get out there using these funds to get streetlights in the neighborhoods, in those neighborhoods that desire streetlights. Some folks like the darkness of their neighborhood, but for those neighborhoods that do desire streetlights, that would be one of the benefits of this program, would be installing missing streetlights. Another question is how would the street maintenance funds be distributed across the city? We would use those percentages that I showed you before on the different types of maintenance. It has always been our policy in Public Works to spread maintenance monies as equitably as we can around the city, that so that every neighborhood gets some type of maintenance. We do not, we will never ever have all the means to get to every street all at once, but we do try to prioritize our maintenance to those streets that need it the worst and to equitably distribute it around the town. Mayor Peterson asked the question, do streetlights deter crime and increase safety? In your staff report, there is some references to some studies that were done involving both how traffic safety is improved with the installation of streetlights and how crime is generally deterred through the presence of streetlights. Another question finally was would the fee amount increase over time? There is some concern that once you get a fee established, you just start raising it and raising it and raising it, and that is not the intent of staff's recommendation. The model that we have been using shows that if PGE and Salem Electric are able to keep their electricity rates relatively stable within the 3% rise per year, that there's no reason to raise this fee for about seven to 10 years. Okay? So that is one of the things that we've been trying to tell people, is that this is not, the proverbial get the camel's nose in the tent. This is a fee that we can put in place and then keep it in place for a long time without having to raise it. Some next steps. Tonight, we recommend the council take testimony, and that you keep the public record open for some period of time that you would then desire to keep open. Staff recommends you may want to consider an additional work session to go over some of the issues that you hear about tonight, and at some point then deliberate whether you want to enact a fee or not. But at this point, I would recommend we, I am done my presentation, I either take testimony or I'm welcome to answer questions.
All right, thank you very much. We will open the public hearing and start taking testimony, and for this type of hearing, it's a three-minute time limit. And so any of you who may not have testified before, at the end of two minutes, the amber light comes on on the podium, and you can use either podium, whichever is most convenient for you. At the end of three minutes, the red light comes on. And I'd like to start with Leona Schumacher, please. And following her is Richard Mathel. And if I mispronounce your name, I do apologize.
My name is Leona Schumacher. I live in South Salem on Crestview. When you use the word "fee," you're just pulling the wool over people's eyes. It's a tax. It always will be a tax. There's no getting around it. If you want to tax, tax the entire state where everything would be equal to everybody. This is ridiculous. I live on a very small income. When I pay all of my bills, I have $189 left over. That's what I live on. There's no way that I can afford your $2, your $4, whatever you want to call it, fee, it's a tax. I think it's wrong. You don't have the money, you don't buy. It's simple. You don't have the money.
I'm going to ask people to please hold your applause, hold your comments. We do not want outbursts in the council chambers. It interrupts the testimony and is discourteous to the other people around you. Anyone who does not comply with that will be asked to leave this evening. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. I know I'm a little hot under the collar because this is something that's very important to me and for everybody else in the city. You can't spend money that you don't have, and by taking that money from people like myself and others, many of you in the city, it's not going to work. All you do is keep taxing and taxing. All of the utilities got raises. It hurt me. It'll hurt all of you. That's all it is. It's another way of getting money and calling it a fee, but it is a tax, and you all know it.
Thank you. Are there questions from councilors? Thank you very much. Richard Mathel?
Mayor, how do you get on the list? I didn't see the list to sign up, I'm sorry.
We'll add you to the list. Sure.
I'm Richard Mather. I live at 1485 Amen Street Northwest, Salem, Oregon 97304. Most of my questions were answered by the presentation that was given, but there's one more that I have. Nothing has been mentioned as to what kind of money we would save by changing from the present lights to the LEDs. At our church at Westminster, I have changed all the lights to LEDs, and we have saved almost 20% to, well, I'll leave it at 20% saved on the electric bill. So I'm hoping that somebody can come up with approximately what they'd change over maybe over five or 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilors, do you have any questions of Mr. Mather? Then we'll move to Jean Stars and following Jean, Don Gardner. The reason I called two names at once, if you can kind of start to queue up, it will really help and everybody will have a chance to testify before the hour gets too late. Thanks.
Time on?
Yes, you are. Welcome.
As you probably know, council, you have received a survey and a petition from me. I hope you have copies of it. It has 28 names of my neighbors who are opposed to this proposal. And we are surprised that this room is not jam-packed tonight because as I went around and spoke with people about this measure, I found no one who was in favor of it, not one, nary a one. So therefore, we ask the council to reconsider this proposal. The proposal to raise taxes on streetlights to pay for street maintenance is convoluted to begin with, hard to understand, harder to understand on a three-by-five postcard. We need a lot more information before we see you act on this. We also point out and remind the council that we are already paying $1.9 million per year to the city via a pass-through tax. That's what the older lady was talking about, the pass-through tax that you don't have to vote on, that gives the council the permission to raise and lower the fees as it needs to do so. That's the power you have and which you probably need, but you certainly don't need to abuse it. Next, we understand that the expected lifespan of a streetlight pole can be up to 90 years. I haven't seen one replaced since I've lived in Salem. And the lifespan of the lamp can range from 20 to 40 years. So to tax streetlights to put in streets doesn't make sense to me, especially in terms of maintenance. Now, the gentleman that spoke just before me talked about LCD or LED lights. The SCI report includes a section that recommends that the city not do that, that it postpone that. The SCI report was done at the University of Oregon, and it was a flawed report because it was done with the presence of the staff giving recommendations as it was conducted. That was a flawed report. Mr. Bechtel tells me that the city pays its light bill from the gas tax, and yet on our bills from the electric utility, thank you, we see that we pay $1.9 million per year right now via that pass-through tax measure. And it was confirmed that it is considered a pass-through tax measure by the utilities. I have the email if you'd like to see it. Finally, if you can't tell me where the $1.9 million goes, does the electric utility maintain its own poles? If so, then the city has only its two-thirds of the total inventory of 10,000 poles. I'm sorry, I'm through.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Counselors, are there questions? All right, thank you very much. Don Gardner, followed by Luann Wright, and then Joanne Schneider. Good evening, welcome.
Councilmen and ladies.
Can you speak right into the microphone? There, you can move it up.
I represent Evergreen Village, which is a private park, and we pay our light bill directly to PG&E, not to the city of Salem. And they maintain our poles, our lights, and so on. So I feel that our park, along with every other private park that deals directly with PG&E, be exempt from this fee in any way, shape or form, because the city does nothing for us in our park, period. Thank you.
Are there questions by councilors? Thank you very much. Luann Wright, followed by Joanne Schneider, and then Bob Elliott.
Hi, my name's Luann Wright. I live in Ward 7 on Dogwood Drive, and I have some concerns about this fee because I've lived there for 10 years, and it's one of the prettiest neighborhoods in the city with the most treacherous sidewalks ever. And I don't know if anybody remembers these, but this has been sitting on my fridge since 2007, saying, "You're going to come and fix my sidewalks. You've never come and fixed my sidewalks." Kids use them as bike ramp for jumps. We think there's an animal living under part of one. So my concern with this is I've kind of seen this before, and I don't know that, I've seen downtown get new sidewalks and new curbs, but our neighborhood still has crumbling curbs and crumbling sidewalks. And I just would hope that the city council is going to pay a little more attention to the folks who live here and the 39,000 people who are going to pay the chunk of this and give us something in return. That's it.
Thank you. Are there questions by any councilors? Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming down tonight. Joanne Schneider, followed by Bob Elliott, and then Bob Beck.
Good evening, my name is Joanne Schneider. I live in Caillou Circle, Southeast Salem, in a homeowners association called Kuskuski. I am currently the vice president of the homeowners association. When I first received my postcard and saw that it was for streetlight and neighborhood street maintenance, I became a little concerned and somewhat angry over it because we are fighting the same situation with our sidewalks in our neighborhood. The city many years ago planted sweet gum trees, which have now overgrown, and the roots are pushing our sidewalks up to the point where we have areas where the sidewalks, one is here and one is here. We have been working with two gentlemen from the city that came out to our homeowners association meeting in February and promised that we would get some action. And working with us, we have our landscape committee that is working closely with Bruce Hildebrand and Jan Strazuski, and we were told that one of our major trees that was causing a problem was going to be removed in February. February came and went, nothing happened. In April, we contacted the gentleman again, and they said, "No, it'll be another two months." Two more months have passed, and we still not have received any word. We sent another email out and have received nothing, no reply at all. The gentleman that's in charge of working with the city sent out a letter to our representative, to Mr. Clausen, who unfortunately is not here tonight, I wish he was, and he said, "At least, the very least, a response from the Public Works folks would have been nice, but it is also, it should be expected. We should have some response from them rather than being strung along." He said, "Not much of an incentive from the people out here in Kuskuski to support the new streetlight and street sidewalk additional proposed fees, especially since, as stated below by your street service people, the local streets are not a priority." We were told that we were very low on the list and that we needed to be patient. Many of our homeowners have taken over the repair of their sidewalks themselves, but this is not possible for everyone. This has become an issue of credibility for us. If this fee passes, which I now understand will include sidewalks, we still have our doubts whether we will receive the services in our neighborhood as well as the other parts of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Schneider? Thanks very much for coming down. Bob Elliott, followed by Bob Beck, and then Larry George.
Thank you. My name is Bob Elliott, and I live at 1775 McCaw Street. I want to thank, Dan's not here, but I want to thank Dan for his dedication of Ward 8 and the entire city. He's done a great job for us. My first point tonight is on page nine of the handout that we received talks about expanding the effect of multi-year plan in the installing streetlights in areas without lights or insufficient lighting. So before I go into my point, I think it's safe to say we as taxpayers assume that the council is going to pass this ordinance. I think it's a done deal and it's going to go forward. If it is, I have a recommendation. I'd like to see the city staff look at an option of having these areas that are mentioned on page 13, the ones without lights and insufficient lights, have them form their own light district. Have them tax themselves for the installation of the wiring pole and fixtures. My neighborhood needed lights. Did we wait for the city? No. Our neighbors came together. I am the president of the light district. We formed it. We had it formed, build it out, taxed ourselves, and installed in a very short time. It's funny, when we do it privately, funded through Salem Electric, they paid the bill and we paid it back to them, but it was done within months. I went out in the middle of the night... the middle of the night, about 8:30 in the wintertime, which is a great time to sell your cause, when you can barely get up people's driveways, walkways, and very simple. We put in 20 lights in a very short time. I did not ask the city for any help, and we took care of it ourselves. So maybe the people, the city, those groups that are identified, and I don't know where the gentleman is, is running, is it you service over here? If you go out, you've already identified those neighborhoods, you've already identified the areas that needed. On page 13, you talk about having the staff conduct a poll. So you're going to go out and talk to them anyway. If the city would just turn their effort around, get the paperwork like I did, have the city attorney help them get all the paperwork done, walk up to their home, have them get 56%, and they vote for it, have them pay for the lights, the installation, and get it all squared away. Now, I was told that the city would take care of it for the rest of our lives. Well, things change in life. I understand that. So I'm not saying anything about that. My second point is, is that, and I have to agree with some people here, and I don't ever come down here. I never really complain. But my second point is that you call it a fee when it's really a tax. Call it what it is, a tax. Remember 2002, got the little article in the Today's Paper, it was voted down. That's probably why you're not doing it. That's why you're going to call it a fee. And we're getting feed to death. And that's what people in my neighborhood and everybody else is getting tired of. It's a tax. It's not a fee. Every place around, they're just adding another fee, another fee, another fee. And pretty soon, when the city council comes down for another vote, you're going to get people saying, "I'm done." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions? Wait just a moment, please. Counselor Dickey.
Thank you for coming down. I do have a couple of questions for you. So when you put your own streetlights in, I'm curious to know how many homeowners kind of came together to help do that, and what was the cost to each of the homeowners?
We had 100. This is 1987. It was a subdivision that was out on West Salem, right below the high school. And Walt Buchanan bought the 100 lots for, you know, a certain amount of money. We sold them all. There's about 100 lots. I got 66 votes. I need 66%. So I went on, and when I got the 66, I got a few more. A lot of them were vacant lots, which count against a no, because there's no one there except Walt Buchanan, who said he didn't want them. But it was $240 a tax that we paid. You could pay it out one time. You could pay it monthly. Or if you didn't want to pay it at all, because you said you didn't vote for it, you weren't going to pay it. It was a lien against that homeowner when they got ready to sell it. And I turned that over. I was the president of that for about three years. And then when the debt was met, I just formed the light district. And anybody can do it. Just find somebody that's got some spirit and go out there. And why should everybody that already has lights pay for other people that haven't had lights for years? You know, they all wait for the city to do it. They all wait for the government to do it. Get off your butt. Go out and do it yourself. And that's easy. So they're going to take a poll anyway. Go out there and have an option. Have all the paperwork. People don't want to do things because of the paperwork. I got it all. I just went out, they could read it, it was a flyer, have them sign their name. I got the 66 of them, turned it to the city, I mean, into Salem Electric, and they built it out. Does that answer your question? Anybody else?
All right.
Thank you for showing some interest. Thank you.
Thanks very much. We appreciate you coming down. Bob Beck, followed by Larry George, and then Bill Demetrius.
Yes, I'm Bob Beck. I live on Winchester Street in West Salem. And a couple of my questions have been answered. That was very good. I was curious about the price of what you had to pay for the streetlights. One thing that I've been for this proposal, either alternative A or B, is because the east end of Winchester, the first two blocks have had streetlights. We've lived in our house since it was brand-new in 1978. The west side has been dark all these years, 35 years. We've been living in the dark. And we would love to have streetlights. And if we would get streetlights and be high on the priority, I would be in favor of either the $2.50 or the $4 a month fee, or maybe an alternative like Bob had mentioned. So that is my suggestion. So if I would get streetlights, I'd be in favor. That's what I'm here to say.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Are there questions from counselors? All right. Thanks for coming down. We appreciate your testimony. Larry George, followed by Bill.
Madam Mayor and council, it's nice to see you all again.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
I'm Larry George. I live at 1285 Centennial Court Southeast here in Salem, Oregon. And I have a streetlight. But I'd just like to recap what's been going on since the first of the year. Recap it not only for the people here, but for the people maybe watching this on public television. We not only had a water sewer fee increase this year, but you broke out the stormwater fee part of the bill. And many people are paying a higher price now on their bill for the stormwater rates. And you doubled the rates on the parking meters. Now you want to add more of them downtown where you don't have them now. You have a backflow device. If you have a backflow device on your sprinkler system, it's $1.25 a month now on that. And then you get a franchise fee, which has always been a sore point of mine, and which I paid on this last bill, I think $3.20. You get a million or two on that. It's supposed to go for streets. And Mr. Bechtel said part of it goes for streets, and I don't know how much of it, because that part is kind of like, I don't know. But this franchise fee is normally for like cable TV, television, I mean, excuse me, PGE, privately owned businesses. And it's always been a sore spot to me that the city owns this business and are still charging us a franchise fee. But that's argument for another day. But now you want to charge us for streetlights under the guise that you need money for streets. And I agree with the other people that said it's a tax. And it is a tax, because I have a working streetlight. And right now, if you put more on my bill, it's not a fee, it's a tax. And as an outgoing member of the Budget Committee, I'm appalled at your doing this when I know the amount of money that you carry over every year from year to year in your carryover fund that you've set back. But instead, you're going to put this fee on the bill and squeeze the people for it when you've got the money to do it, and you just need to transfer it over and take care of it. But instead, you do this big presentation, and I don't buy it. And so I guess what I should say is, here's some figures. On 1st of January, six units of water cost me $10.25. In April, it was $11.40. Now, that's an increase of 11.2%. And if you add another $4 to my bill, the increase will be 17.8%. And I'm going to quote in the end, a great philosopher, John Wayne, who said, "This ain't right, and I'm getting tired of what ain't right."
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Mr. George? Thanks for coming down. Bill, how do you say your last name, please?
It's domesticus.
Thank you.
Yeah. Bill's fine, though, in case anyone wants to ask any questions.
Well, thank you.
I live in northeast Salem, off of Summer Street. Used to be a neighbor of Brad's. And I agree with many of the points that have already been made, so I'm not going to be rehashing them. But I also agree that in that this is not based on need, but based on a need to survive the city. It's really a tax on us. My brother is disabled. He barely makes it on his own. He makes more than the $14,000 a year. And I don't know how anybody could live on less than $14,000 a year. But that would be one thing you might want to consider, is raising that level up. But as far as I'm concerned, it's a tax that I particularly don't want to have to pay. I know my brother can't afford to pay. He was too sick to come. Otherwise, he would have also provided testimony. I agree with one of the other comments, too, that we know that there's going to be savings based on using LEDs, but I didn't see the savings plowed back into the figures that were used as to how you're going to use that savings to augment any future costs that you might have. Secondly, anytime there's a slush fund, having worked in county government myself, anytime there's a fund that's just sitting there, it tends to be used for something other than its intended purpose. That would concern me that you would have excess fees that would be raised and not have it be absolutely dedicated for the purpose intended. The other thing that disturbs me is the fact that this feels like we're beginning to pay for things à la carte. We pay our taxes. We have our fees that we pay for everything else. Now, if you're going to start adding on fees for individual things that the city needs, it feels like we're getting everything à la carte, and we're going to have to pay extra for what we normally would expect the city to provide for the citizens. So those are my comments. And I hope you don't pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions by any of the counselors? Thank you very much. Mercedes Bush, followed by Andrew Booth.
Good evening. Welcome. My name is Mercedes Bushy, and I live at 3103 Corden Road. And on Corden Road, my nearest street is Indiana, and that's the only streetlight that's even from there clear down to Sunny View. So I don't see having to pay a streetlight fee when I don't even have a streetlight near my place. And it's the same thing with the storm drain. My nearest storm drain is west of my house, because that comes into a cul-de-sac that I don't even have access to. And my storm drain is about a quarter of a mile from my house, but I'm still paying a fee for a storm drain. And then I have my own private well, so there's no way you can tell how much water I have used to what goes into my sewer. So I only think I'm obligated to pay for a sewer bill. But being a single woman, and I'm 68 years old, how much sewer can I run out through into your thing? You know, I wash like three loads of clothes a week and take a bath, and you know, that kind of stuff. So it's very minimal. And my driveway is facing east, where it comes in for the, you know, you're talking about fixing the streets. My driveway facing east on Corden, and my only driveway goes out on Corden Road. So I don't have any of those back streets back behind my house. And I am also told that the city of Salem owns an easement of 10 feet from my driveway going towards Corden, and that Marion County owns the other 10 feet. But nobody in these municipalities will come up and clean out the berry bushes. They won't clean out the ditch. They do nothing. I mean, the front of my place, from my gate out to Corden Road, is just kind of a mess. But I, in '68, I can do what I can do, and that's about it. So I would like the city of Salem to think about reducing my sewer and stormwater bill and not include my property in the streetlight fee. And I do work highway construction, so I do understand when you talk about the maintenance of our streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Wait a moment, Ms. Bushy. There is a question. Counselor Nanki.
Thanks. Thanks for coming down. So did your driveway actually, if you had runoff, run into Corden Road?
No. When it rains, I have big puddles in my yard, and I have set up about five French drains on my property, so any of the excess water on my property will go into the drains. They don't even go out into the street. They don't even flow over to the neighbor's house. All rainwater stays on my property.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Andrew Booth, followed by Tom Lancefield.
Good evening, Mayor and counselors. For the record, my name is Andrew Booth. I live at 1005 Capitol Street Northeast. I'm going to echo some of the comments made by others here. I came down to council a number of years ago and testified about the sidewalk repair program and the plans to turn that over to the homeowners, and also commented on my opposition to some of the urban renewal projects that we had on the agenda in that day. And what I see here is passing the buck. The city made a commitment to repair sidewalks, as a number of people noted, that hasn't been done. It hasn't been done in my house, in front of my house. And so what we're doing now is we're going to try to pass a streetlight fee that will help fund a street maintenance fee that will then help fix my sidewalks. And that's very confusing to me. And somebody pointed out earlier that we have the city-owned utilities, water and sewer, but yet we charge ourselves a franchise fee. And as the staff member mentioned in his staff report, those were dedicated funds. And if you look at the chart that was presented as a part of the packet, the delta between what was anticipated and what is actually going to the general fund is currently $2 million. And so my concern is if we pass a streetlight fee or we pass a street maintenance fee, that those funds in the future will be simply redirected to some other purpose. And I have no guarantees that that's going to happen, just like I have no guarantees that the sidewalks are going to be fixed in front of my house. So I think what we're confusing here is two issues, streetlights and road maintenance. And if we put the money from the water and sewer franchise fees back into the program that it was designed for, we wouldn't be in this crisis right now. But we would have shortages to core services. And it comes back to my point. Maybe we shouldn't be so heavily invested in the urban renewal programs in this time of recession, and some of that money that's been frozen in terms of tax base should be returned back to the police and fire and the core services in the city. Now, I know it's a little late to the game, but with respect to the streetlight maintenance area, I'm not sure if we looked at actually establishing a franchise fee for the electric companies. There are communities that I've lived in and are noted in various EPA reports that I've looked at from across the country whereby the streetlights are actually turned over to these electric companies, and they maintain them, and they pay for the electricity on behalf of the citizens. And that would reduce the city's liability in terms of actually having to fund, you know, the staff and the labor to actually go out and maintain these lights. We could turn that over to another entity that would allow that to happen more efficiently and more effectively. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions by counselors? Thanks for coming down. We appreciate your testimony. Tom Lancefield, followed by Judith Sullivan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I appreciate your working in the trenches on this kind of stuff. I signed up, I checked myself, neutral and support, which is kind of a way of saying I'm grudgingly in support of this measure. It's a name-your-poison situation. It's depressing to me to see the streets, not only in my neighborhood, but around the whole town, deteriorate further and further. A part of me would rather maybe see a city gas tax. I don't know how much that would raise as part of that revenue source, but we got to do something. I like the fact that this proposal asks everybody to do it and not just stick it on, I don't know, big box stores or something. Not that I like big box stores. A question or two I had regarding the efficiency savings. I didn't hear any reference to a payback time estimate. That would be kind of interesting to know. And I happen to live in one of those underserved neighborhood areas. I live on Ewald Avenue Southeast, just above Hidden Lake's senior living. I kind of like the dark, but I don't know how the neighborhood people, whether they would want more light or not. But wondering if there's a lot of those kind of areas, if all of those or most of them were, the lighting were increased to the sort of code standard or whatever, would that eat up all of the savings from the efficient lights? Would we be in a sort of a break-even situation? I don't know. As far as the seniors are concerned, maybe they could be cut a better deal. I mean, they are eligible for, I think, some sort of property tax abatements or something, and maybe something like that could be worked into this, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Lancefield? Thanks for coming down. We appreciate your testimony. Judith Sullivan.
Thank you. My name's Judith Sullivan, and I'm here to testify or give my testimony on what I think about this fee or tax, which I agree, it is a tax. I made some figures today, but after hearing the gentleman that spoke earlier that said that this is not part of the water bill, I'm going to use my figures as an example of how fees go up. In 2004, we were paying our water bills, water and sewer, two months at a time. On January 1, 2004, I wrote a check for my water and sewer for $59.18, and that covered two-month service. On June 1, 2013, this year, I wrote a check for $52.19 for one-month service. It seems pretty ridiculous to me that we have all of these fees or taxes that are being added to everything. I just want to note that, excuse me, I'm not used I just want to note that, excuse me, I'm not used to speaking in public, a little bit nervous here. I talked to a city employee today who is involved with this, lights and streets, and he indicated that without the new fee, they wouldn't be able to put in new lights in areas that don't have the lights. And they also wouldn't be able to hire new people for street maintenance and response time for maintenance would be longer. Well, sometimes we all have to wait for what we want. Right now, we've cut back, a lot of us people, in my situation, have cut back on absolutely everything we can. We don't want to lose our homes. But the added fees of $2.50 here, $4.00 there, will eventually make us lose our homes. Like this lady here, I live on $200 a month after my bills are paid. I pay my bills, I don't want assistance, I don't qualify for assistance anyway, but I don't want it, you know, I want to pay for myself. The more you add fees on, the more you're hurting us, the individuals that pay these $2.50 or $4.00 isn't much to a lot of people, but to me, to this lady, it's a loaf of bread or it's a dozen eggs. So I appreciate the opportunity to talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from any of the councilors? We appreciate your testimony, appreciate your coming down. Arlis Shelman, followed by Patty Tipton.
I need to testify.
Oh, okay, that's all right. Judith, excuse me, Patty Tipton. And then E. Smith-Eileen.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers and staff. My name is Patty Tipton, I'm chair for Lansing Neighborhood Association, excuse me, I've got allergies. I'm here to reiterate the letter that we sent previously regarding this fee. I don't know if you received it or not. We have voted no against this due to financial circumstances of our neighbors. Like the rest of the people have said, they are all on fixed incomes, they can't afford extra fees, and they would like you to consider that as part of the problem and not a solution. We don't know what the solution is and we hope that you will look somewhere else for the money. They have come up with some several ideas tonight and I liked some of those ideas. So I hope that you were listening and would take account to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Tipton? Thanks very much, we appreciate your coming and testifying. Ms. Smith?
Right. Board seven. One of the things that keeps coming up is in the presentation on page eight. Approximately $3 million to convert its option B and C streetlights from HPS to LED. Payback of conversion is nine to 10 years. That seems a little long. I think that needs to be re-looked at. And the implication that these were going to last 21 years, it says in the printing, they now have a 10-year warranty and are advertised to be 21 years. Doesn't mean the studies have been done, doesn't mean they're going to last 21 years. Couple of things could be cut. Street sweeping. They're constantly sweeping clean streets in my neighborhood. Constantly. I don't know why we are wasting money on this. These are some things that could be cut. When there's a lot of leaves, when there's water backing up, great, we don't need to sweep clean streets. The dollars for the vehicles, constantly I'm seeing the vehicles around with people that are going nowhere. I can follow them and if you want, I can tally it up to give you that proof. Providing streetlights, light pollution. Anybody want to read about light pollution? Take them out of my neighborhood. I have to get blackout lights, blackout curtains so that I can sleep at night. Please don't put these bigger LEDs in my neighborhood. I can't sleep. Please get rid of them. And finally, Supreme Court USA, it's a tax. Thank you.
Excuse me, I think there's a question for you. Counselor Dickey has a question.
Yes, thank you for coming down. I do have a question because you mentioned the street sweeping. I'm curious to know, in your neighborhood, if you have bike lanes?
No. Okay. It's a residential street. Thank you. Thanks. Kathleen Dewana, followed by Fred Cervantes and Claudia Howells.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. I'm Kathleen Dewana, I live at 1045 Thistle Street Northeast in Salem. I had put a package together for you and emailed it to you that gave you some practical examples to characterize residential street lighting services and show that the cost burden for those services is not significantly different for single-family than small multi-family units, okay? The common denominator for street lighting cost is street frontage, not dwelling unit occupancy. Where you have lot frontages of 70 to 75 feet, you have one streetlight serving about four dwellings. Where you have lot frontages of 50 feet, you have one streetlight for six. Where you have lot frontages of 20 feet, you got one streetlight for 14 to 16 units, okay? Using dwelling unit occupancy unfairly has the person occupying a 400-square-foot home or rental subsidizing the person occupying a 4,000-square-foot home. Using that dwelling unit occupancy has a couple occupying a 900-square-foot duplex subsidizing the couple occupying a 3,600-square-foot home. It's unfair. I was very pleased to hear that your prior council commented that per-unit charges were tantamount to a tax. That holds for small multi-units as well because there is a disparity between the cost and the benefit served. The common denominator again for street lighting cost is lot frontage. Benefiting groups vary with the general classification and use of streets. Neighborhood streets benefit neighborhood, neighborhood lighting benefits the neighborhoods. Collector's streets, lighting on collector's streets benefits several neighborhoods. Lighting on the arterial streets benefits the entire community. I'm sorry, I don't have more time to talk to you about this, but for the streetlights that have the public benefits probably best served by the general fund, those that have more private specific benefits best handled by lighting districts. Lighting districts pay their bills once a year through their tax, through their tax systems. Just as a real quick comparison, you're proposing about $96 a year for a duplex, same in a lighting district is paying $55 a year. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done on this. I would hope you would not impose a special tax on small multi-units. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Ms. Dewana? Thanks for coming down, appreciate that testimony. Fred Cervantes, followed by Claudia Howells.
Fred Cervantes here, I live by the house, Mark Mitchell.
Oh, all right, thank you very much. Claudia Howells, followed by Feng Jing Li.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I am Claudia Howells and I live at 1045 Cross Street Southeast, which is within the Scan neighborhood. I'm not going to repeat what's already been said tonight, I'll just highlight a couple of things. First of all, I, like many others here tonight, would strongly recommend that you go back to the drawing board and think through this before you move this on as a recommendation. Converting funding of general public services to fees is simply bad public policy and may actually violate the law. Streets and streetlights are a primary function and responsibility of government, so they should therefore be paid from property and road user fees or taxes as they are now. I also, I am going through my testimony here because so much has been said, but finally, having watched a couple of proceedings recently, I'd like to request that if you proceed tonight, that when the ordinance comes back, that it comes to another public hearing. Because what we're looking at tonight is a proposal, we have not seen the language of the ordinance. I would not like the ordinance to end up on a consent calendar without the benefit of further discussion. Anyway, with that, I will close my comments. Thank you.
Are there questions of Ms. Howell? Thank you very much, appreciate your testimony. Am I saying your name correctly, Feng Jing Li?
Yes.
All right, thank you, welcome.
Thank you, everybody. My name is Feng Cui Li and thank you gave me this opportunity. I agree the most with people today and I appreciate all the mayor and the councilors consider the citizens' feelings. Thank you.
Are there questions from any of the councilors? Thank you very much. Steve Corbin, followed by Mary Ann Beery.
I guess my wife signed me up and I didn't know about it, so. So yeah, I would just, I would second a lot of the opinions that are around and just concerned about a lot of costs going up and people on fixed income and so just consider it closely, thanks.
All right, are there questions by any of the councilors? All right, thank you very much. Mary Ann Beery, followed by John Miller and then Brad Morrison.
Good evening, council, mayor and staff. I'm Mary Ann Byrne and I live in Ward Five. I'm here to testify against the added fee to the Salem utility bill to pay for streetlights and street maintenance. Right from the Department of Public Works webpage, it says, "Public Works Department constructs and maintains the infrastructure necessary for the basic urban needs of the Salem metropolitan area. This includes a safe and reliable road system, healthy and plentiful water supplies, a well-functioned storm drain system and proper treatment of wastewater." Since road systems are part of the major responsibility of the Department of Public Works, why haven't they allocated enough money to their budget to do their job? Why does a new fee have to be collected from the general population to pay for road maintenance? I would think this comes out of the regular operating budget of the city. This department recently redesigned their billing statement for utilities to be able to add an additional change for stormwater, which was another fee. I'm seeing a department which is not living within its budget and is coming up with creative fees to cover for its budgeting problems. I'm seeing a department which is spending money on nonessential projects in a time of financial downturn to the economy. Unlike the folks who live here who have to eliminate some desired projects around the home to stay on track with bills and the cost of living during this economic slowdown, I'm seeing a Department of Public Works which has stayed the course with an expensive project they've been working on since before the 2008 downturn. Why is the Department of Public Works in this council still spending tens of thousands of dollars of money which could go to street maintenance and repair and streetlights on the third bridge redesign and consultants' fees for the draft environmental impact statement for that bridge? Another person whose testimony has been submitted and is also reverberated and other people who have testified tonight is according to the Oregon Constitution, if a citizen can decline the cost, it is a fee, otherwise it is a tax. The proposed streetlight fee cannot be declined, it is therefore a tax. The proposal to fund streetlights must be approved by the voters of the city of Salem. No more taxes to pay for necessary work of the city when the city is spending money on superfluous unnecessary projects. I also find it curious that on this graph in the handout, that back in the financial years, back in 2004 to 2008, when everything was just fine financially, that these folks were able to do just fine on $7 million a year. And now, even though we're still in a recession, we need $8.5 million. So I'm really seeing that there's a problem here with budgeting and with allocating priorities and projects within a particular department. And that we as the citizens don't want to have to pay those extra fees. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Are there questions of any, by any councilors? All right, thank you so much. John Miller, followed by Brad Morrison.
Good evening, my name is John Miller, 495 State Street. I'm the past president of the Chamber of Commerce and here representing the chamber. Thank you for accepting the letter that we provided on this subject. And anytime I come down here to speak, I'm always struck by a sense of appreciation for what city councilors do and the amount of time that you put in and the issues that you wrestle with, and I know they're not easy. Running a business, as I think about this issue, and this is the second time I've heard staff's presentation and have considered it, I'm struck by the fact that this is always presented as a revenue problem. And I feel like it's viewed and presented as a revenue problem because the expense side of the equation, you feel, is so far out of your hands. And the chamber, as our letter indicates, is very eager to work with city council and see if there's some alternatives for addressing the expense side of this equation, so the revenue side is not so challenging. And I think you've heard from the testimony tonight from a lot of these folks, that when you take this approach to addressing problems with a fee-for-service basis, it's very complicated and very sticky. And again, as our letter indicates, we're also interested in working with city council to see if we can develop a approach to solving these problems that takes a hard look at this fee-for-service model and to see if there's not a better way to solve some of these problems. So thank you very much.
Thank you for coming and testifying. And I wonder if any councilors have questions? All right, thank you very much. Chuck Carpenter, followed by Denny Smith.
Brad.
I'm sorry, Brad Morrison, didn't mean to leave you out.
It's okay. My name is Brad Morrison, I live at P45 Piedmont, West Salem. I understand the good intentions of the city council in wishing to replace existing sodium lights with higher-efficiency LED lights and so forth. That seems to be in doubt, how efficacious that's going to be. I believe the 1.1 million, however, shortfall can be addressed by considering some budget alterations, perhaps to PERS, for instance. I was looking at your website while I was listening to everybody else talk and it seems that for fiscal years 2013 through 14, PERS employer contribution rates increased 48% versus the forecasted 23%, and that's an increase from 1.7 million to 2.9 million, which is a difference of 1.2 million, and that would be your needed 1.1 million for your project. I realize that's a thorny issue and there's some real hate and discontent there, but that's something to consider. I was also the understanding, as has been mentioned earlier, that sidewalk maintenance was going to be at some point in the near future falling on the shoulders of property owners. And I have seen very little movement on the city's part to repair any of the sidewalks that they said they were going to repair. So that's something that's a real concern. As has been mentioned previously, this isn't a fee, it's a tax. It really is a tax. So I resent the supposition that this is a fee. That's insulting. Given the exorbitant SDCs builders have had to pay and the rampant increases in utility charges over the past several years, it's my opinion, this body needs to tighten its belt, shift funds and begin finding ways to reduce taxes in order to encourage economic growth in our city. And therefore, I urge this body to vote no on this proposal.
Thank you very much. Are there questions by any of the councilors? Appreciate your testimony, thanks for coming down. Chuck Carpenter, followed by Denny Smith.
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Chuck Carpenter, 248 Beverly Avenue Northeast. I work with manufactured home communities and residents and owners of those communities. Those residents have paid for, been through the rent for the lights, for the roads, they are privately owned lights, privately owned roads. I don't know whether this is a tax or not, but I do know that if you go through with this, this is a rent increase for many of the people who are the most disadvantaged in our community, who live in manufactured home communities. who live in manufactured home communities. There's about 25 parks in the City of Salem, representing about 1,600 residents, who probably feel right now that they already pay for the lighting and they pay for the maintenance of their streets and don't understand why they're going to be assessed with an additional fee. We have tried to work with the city council on affordable housing. And one of the issues we keep coming back to you on is that these are the sort of things, these incidental fees that you keep adding and adding and adding. This is what is driving up the cost of housing for a very vulnerable population in this city. And this is just another classic example, that you're just going to add a small amount on to this. And in a case, there shouldn't even be added on to these people at all. And then you wonder, and you sit back and you wonder, why is there no affordable housing in the City of Salem or in the state of Oregon? And this is the classic example. As I said, I don't know whether it's a tax or not, but I do know that this is a rent increase and this has a tremendous effect on people's ability to afford housing in the city. And I urge you to at least take a look at those areas where those streets are privately owned, where residents who live in manufactured home communities already own the lights in their community, have already paid for them. Why are they going to pay for it again? Then you're going to sit back and wonder, geez, I wonder why nobody can afford to live in a mobile home park anymore? Thank you.
Are there questions by any of the councilors? All right. Thank you. We appreciate you coming and testifying. Mr. Smith, welcome.
I'm Denny Smith. I represented this area for 10 years in the US Congress and I know about budgets and the lack of attention there, too. I do appreciate what the council has to do and I have never spoken before you before. I think clearly this is a tax and it is insulting. We have a wastewater, a rainwater tax, if you will. That's what they were calling it in Maryland recently. It's ridiculous. This thing, you can't send that bill out because I'm on the Ilehe Water System for the amount of money that I give you to do that. And it's insulting that we would have to give you money. I pay you for my house, I think, $13,000 a year in property taxes. Have the guts to go out for a special levy. I think you made a pretty good case. We need some streets fixed, some other things. I'm sure you can winnow it down. But the fact of the matter is that if we need these services, we need to be honest. You've had about 300 to 500 people that responded to a 29,000 postcard, which, you know, we got here and everybody has a copy thereof. But if that were done correctly, it would not be the 500 or 800 or whatever you had back. You'd have votes on people and you'd know whether or not people wanted to pay this. And in a responsive government, you need to allow the voter to participate. This is a non, I mean, this public meeting is fine, but we're not getting to the bulk of the people. I thought I'd not be able to find a place to park in the area around here. It's ludicrous. It's not high enough. It will go up before 10 years. I'd bet you on that. He said, well, it'd be 10 years before they'd have to raise it. Not true. This will be up. This is a, this is not the camel. I think it's probably a huge animal, much bigger, getting under the tent here. So anyway, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Smith? Thanks. We appreciate you coming and testifying, staying to the very end. Thank you very much. Did anyone else want to testify this evening that wasn't able to get their name on the list? Yes. Would you like to come down to the microphone and introduce yourself and give us your, please tell us your address or the ward you live in?
Hi, my name is Suzanne Luley and I live in Ward Two.
Suzanne, what's your last name?
Luley.
Thank you.
All right. I just have a couple of comments. I live on a property that is classified as commercial property. And right across the street from me, my neighbors are on residential property. Their water bill is just under $50 a month. It's like $49.23 a month. And mine runs about $132 a month in my commercial property. I do not have employees. It's just my husband and myself. So you know how much water I'm running compared to my neighbors across the street, who have four people, two of them being teenage daughters, that are running their house. So I'm paying about close to three times as much as they are for their water bill. I did have an instance last year where one of the parts in our water meter broke. They came out and fixed it. Our water bill went up considerably during that time. And for three months in a row, I wrote and I asked and called and asked for them to please adjust my bill. And I've never gotten a response from staff, ever. Three times in writing and at least four phone calls. No accountability there. You already have, you know, enough money for, extra for my water bill to pay for another month for me. But one of the things that I do want to point out, as a business, and I am a very small business, when my fees and taxes and rates go up, guess who pays those? This lady here is going to get five cents more on her carton of eggs, seven cents more on her gallon of milk. Because the businesses that are having those taxes assessed to them are not going to pay them all by themselves. It's going to be passed on to the community. And I think that you need to be aware, this tax is, comes from unaccountability within the staff to manage their budget dollars. And that's unfair to the people who have limited resources in this town. You need to go back and they need to rework their numbers and they need to be accountable for what they're doing. If they're not accountable for what they're doing, send them home for a week without pay. No vacation, no sick time, no inclusion on their insurance or their PERS. Send them home and drop their income by a quarter for a month and let them understand what these other people are having to live with on a day-to-day basis. Please bring this back to a public hearing again. Don't vote it through. That's a slap in the face to us. Please be considerate to us. Bring it back to a public hearing unless you table it completely. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I would ask you to please be sure to give your contact information, let's say, to Peter Fernandez and we'll get back to you on the question that you had not been hearing back from staff on, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. Did any of the staff, any councilors have questions for Ms. Luley? For Ms. Luley? No. Okay. All right. Thanks very much. Okay. I don't see anyone else on the list. Going, going, gone. Appreciate everybody's patience and everyone staying through the testimony. We will now have staff return to the podium and have questions from council. All right. Do you want to ask a question first or do we? Mr. Bechtel, did you have anything further you wanted to clarify?
Madam Mayor, we can answer some questions directly tonight. We can come back to you with additional information.
All right. Well, let's go to some questions. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two, and they were actually asked by some of the folks testifying tonight again as well. The cost to have PGE take over the system, I know we saw that in the Finance Committee meeting. And it was significantly more expensive than the proposal that's on the table. Is that a correct statement?
That is correct, Counselor. It'd be more expensive to sell our lights to PGE at this time.
And then second, $3 million to convert to LED. I know we, as part of the Streets and Bridges Bond Measure, did some work on pedestrian lighting for school crossings and what have you. Would conversion to LED actually be potentially put forth as a pedestrian safety option and/or some other mechanism inside, basically, is it bond-eligible inside of our current street bond?
Counselor, we would have to check with our bond counsel to verify that for sure. But it is, as our opinion, the staff, that when you look at the three categories of projects that were in the bonds and the types of projects that were described, certainly, street lighting was included in new projects. New streetlights were put in as part of new projects. But there really was no indication to the voters at that time that those proceeds would be used to purchase a system or to convert a system to just be more, you know, efficient. And so we're a little reluctant to support the idea of using bond funds.
It'd be interesting to get a formal opinion on whether or not it's eligible or not. And then lastly, the actual cost savings per year of running LED lamps versus our current sodium vapors.
Yeah, I'd like to call David Lacy up to the podium if I could. He's done our financial modeling from the Finance Department and he's extremely well-versed on the ins and outs of the fee model.
David Lacy from Administrative Services. And we did go through some of this with some of you at Finance Committee, but just to give you a little bit of an indication on the LED savings, within the report, the technical report that was included with the staff report, there's a table that does show some of the kilowatt savings per fixture type, kind of the difference between the high-pressure sodium and the LED. So the majority of the savings would come from energy savings, but also maintenance savings within the tariff rates for PGE and Salem Electric for those things. But as far as some of the numbers, we were looking at 15-year financing, just as an example, for the model. And so if we look at what those savings would be over 15 years, it would be approximately $4.7 million for the system that would be for that amount. There are some different calculations. Once you figure in debt service and things, too, you have a net present value of approximately $750,000. And then a payback, which some have referenced, of approximately nine years for the city-owned and city-initiated portion of that. The other part of the conversion is the Option A PGE lamps, which they currently own. PGE will be starting to convert those lamps next spring and that we're expecting that to be about $90,000 a year or so in savings.
Just a quick follow-up on that one, but then down the line, this contemplates us purchasing those Type A fixtures, correct?
From Salem Electric? That's correct. We're modeling at this point based on even the Capstone Report that came out.
And that cost would be more than the cost to purchase now and convert ourselves?
Well, I think the purchase price would be about $100,000 for the Salem Electric, the last time we saw that. And as far as conversion for us to do, yeah. Because the way the Option A lights work is we pay a number of fees. We pay the energy tariff. We pay a fixture expense. We pay, you know, the different ones for maintenance and pole replacement, too. So purchasing those limits the amount of tariffs that we get. The city would maintain, would then have to replace those poles and Salem Electric wouldn't in that case. But that would be a savings as far as what we're expecting with the fixture prices.
Essentially, it would be better for us to take them before they convert them.
Are you talking about PGE or?
PGE or Salem Electric either. As they convert theirs over, that cost to buy them will be more than for us to buy them the way they are now and convert them ourselves.
Correct. And yeah, when we did talk within Finance Committee about it, the PGE Option A lights, PGE was not interested in selling those at this point. So we have not discussed that any further.
Till after they're modified?
So, no.
PGE does not show any interest in selling their lights to us.
Yeah. And the energy savings that do happen with that, we still do see a savings because we're already paying pole replacement. We're already paying a lot of those fees within those. So we do see energy savings for PGE doing that for that portion of the system. But us selling our lights to PGE would include the pole tariffs we'd have to pay to them and some different charges. There are still some savings and we're still researching that with some new information they've given us and that may be part of an LED conversion. But that would be more information for council if that would go that direction.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Bednarz.
I just wanted to read a rate a little bit more about what Brad was, Counselor Nanki was talking about. And it had to do with capital improvements versus ordinary maintenance and repair. And that's the angle that I'm looking at this whole thing. When we have a light bulb that lasts for 21, be it 10 years guaranteed or at least warranted to 21 years, isn't that a capital improvement? Want to last more than one single year?
Yes, Counselor. I think you could characterize, you know, any kind of investment in a 21-year light bulb as capital. I think the question, though, that Counselor Nanki was really getting at was, would that be an eligible expense for the 2008 Streets and Bridges Bond Measure? And we have to go back to what was in the original bond resolution as to what types of projects would be eligible for the use of the savings that have been realized in that program. And that's where we would have to check with our bond counsel, our bond attorneys, to see if that's an eligible expense. Our feeling is that it probably isn't, but we're not attorneys. So that's something we could check.
Well, that's a nice segue because I would be amiss if I didn't ask our new city attorney temporary. I don't know, per minute? Dan, is it, I see, Escherson?
Escherson, like the railroad.
Thank you. Anyway, what is the difference between a tax and a fee? It was well put out this evening. Is there a legal definition?
There's been several court cases, the Knapp versus Jacksonville case, which I think was someone had presented in the materials. But as has been stated, it's if it's a voluntary obligation, if it's not an obligation to pay, if it's voluntary, then it's more in terms of a fee than a tax.
Thank you. I don't know how that's all going to pan out on this, but I think it's important to know.
I guess the other important consideration is even if it is, would be considered a tax, it may not be a property tax. It may not be subject to Measure Five, Measure Fifty.
Thank you.
Other questions from councilors? I have a couple of comments and questions. One has to do with the sidewalk maintenance and the sidewalk repair program that the city has been undertaking. And I know this is off the top of your heads, but I wonder if someone would please, for everybody's edification, explain what our sidewalk maintenance program has been and if you can remember the miles of sidewalks that we have been repairing. Can you talk about that for a moment?
Sure, Mayor. We have 790 miles of sidewalks in Salem. And we did a survey of their defects several years ago and we registered about 144,000 defects on the sidewalk system. We, back in 2007, we were given some resources to about $1 million in a quest reserve fund to go ahead and start doing sidewalk repair in the neighborhoods. And we aggressively went after block face by block face by block face, bringing those sidewalks up to standards and then turning them over to the adjacent property owners to maintain into the future, except if they were damaged by city street trees. And we're doing that for two years. Then in 2009, we were threatened with litigation on compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. And we were then, we then had to change the focus. Council directed us to change the focus of the program to compliance with ADA, which meant that we had to put our resources largely into rebuilding the corner curb ramps to bring them up to current standards. We have built over 2,000 new corner curb ramps between the Bond Measure projects and our own city crews. And we are in fairly good standing with the Disability Rights Organ Group that was monitoring us. And then council approved us reallocating our resources to be about 70% ADA compliance and 30% sidewalk maintenance. And that's currently how we are allocating our resources. We would like to begin putting more money into neighborhood sidewalk repair. We would very much like to get back into the business of going block face by block face by block face and doing that systematic repair of the sidewalks. As I showed on the presentation, if this fee were to pass, we would recommend that about 15% of those revenues go, be dedicated to neighborhood sidewalk repair.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I think Mr. Bechtel missed an important component. For the record, Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. When that $1 million of quest reserve was allocated to sidewalk repair, that came on the heels of a very substantial effort to look at sidewalks. There was a Citizens Committee that looked at it. And we identified $7 million worth of sidewalk repairs. And there's a substantial amount and only $1 million was allocated. So we are just as frustrated. There was at least one citizen that indicated that, you know, a flyer had been sent out and the frustration that we never got to their neighborhood to repair their sidewalks. So it wasn't only the ADA compliance issue, but it was well-understood right from the beginning that the resource that was allocated to sidewalk repair was nowhere near the amount necessary to complete the entire project. We wanted to allocate, you know, close to $600,000 a year when we thought the Gassex with HB 2001, we felt that was going to be more revenues. We wanted to allocate a substantial amount every year and get through it. We've just, those revenues have never been realized and we've never been able to complete the sidewalk program. But we understood from the very beginning, and council at that time understood from the very beginning, that the resources were nowhere near enough to complete all of the repairs that needed to be done to the sidewalk system.
And just to refresh my boss's memory, it's actually $15 to $20 million that's needed for sidewalk repair.
It's a really small.
Whatever it is, it's real money. And we know that there isn't enough of it to go around on all of the sidewalks. I have read reports from staff about the miles of sidewalks that have been repaired. And I've talked with people who are pleased that they happen to have sidewalks that did get repaired. So we are doing it. We're just not able to be everywhere all the time and complete it to the satisfaction of certainly the citizens and certainly not to my satisfaction either, but we are working on it. The other thing I wanted to know is if there could be a clarification about the line item on the water sewer bill. Because people because people tonight have indicated that it's a new fee, and I don't, I'm certain that that's not the case, but maybe if staff could explain just what that is.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. There are now a minimum of six line items on your sewer bill, when there used to be only two. They are the same rate, but council, at the request of citizens, almost two years ago, made a decision to really stratify out the bill in the interest of transparency. So, what you see on your bill today are two line items per utility. So, there's a base fee and a usage fee for water, a base fee and a usage fee for sewer, and a base fee and a impermeable surface area for storm. Storm is a new line item on the bill. You used to just see water sewer. Storm was paid for inside of the wastewater rate. Council in 2010 authorized us to separate out the storm water from the wastewater bill. Just to not divert the conversation, it was a patently unfair way to bill storm water, especially for industry, who are major water and sewer consumers. So, that was split out, and that's still being implemented. And then council also decided that we wanted to show the franchise fee as a separate line item. So, you see that, I guess, as your seventh line item on the bill. Again, franchise fee was always part of the rate, it was now a separate line. It did not increase the rate. The rates were adjusted to reduce what would have gone directly to the payment of the franchise fee, and now is shown as a separate line item. And then the one other fee that is a new fee is, if you are an owner of a backflow device, council did authorize a fee last year to pay for the component of taking care of that. That is a state-mandated program. It used to be that we simply paid for it, for that program, out of the water rates. It's, less than half of our customers have backflow devices, so there was a fairness issue there. What we charge per month still doesn't cover all of that program rate, but it covers a substantial amount of that. So, those are the seven, up to seven line items that you see on your water bill.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, good. All right. Any further questions of staff? Councilor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In regards to the Save Our Streets Committee recommendations a few years back, and the water sewer franchise fee in regards to its use, I know someone earlier said that it was dedicated. It's not dedicated. It is a general fund revenue source in its current configuration, or...
That's correct. Yeah.
Where it had gone back and forth between where we used it inside of general fund versus dedicating it to streets and pavement maintenance.
That's right.
And that amount is, from our graph about this year, right about $3 million, which is right about the amount of money we're looking to collect in Option A. And it was our recommendation as committee to eventually transfer the entirety of that into streets' maintenance, which could then dealt with the lighting and what have you. But because of general fund issues, that money was taken back.
Right.
Would it, how does staff reconcile that, as a general fund revenue source, which we can use anywhere, and it was suggested and council had passed, to move it to that system, by taking that and moving it somewhere else, could we not have a $3 million shortfall anywhere in the general fund budget that we would be having a public hearing on here tonight versus street maintenance?
That's true. And because the general fund provides core services, a police, fire, library, parks, planning, municipal court, code enforcement, those type of services, we have, as you know, since the recession, since 2007, made substantial reductions in all of those programs. And we've cut about, I think it's 90-some positions out of the general fund over the last four years, as well as other cost reductions. And so, it's been a constant challenge to the Budget Committee and to the City Council about, do we close another fire station? Do we cut more police officer jobs? Do we have more cuts to the hours at the library? We've already reduced maintenance to parks, can we reduce that anymore? And so, the issue is really about core services and priorities, and how those funds are allocated. So, it's not that, you know, there's a lot of money that we're just not using it in this way. It's that what the priorities are for core services. And what a lot of people don't realize is, about 31 cents of your property tax dollar goes to the city of Salem, the rest go to the other taxing jurisdictions. And all of the property tax the city receives does not even pay for police and fire services, much less those other services. And so, council has had to struggle and Budget Committee every year with how to allocate these funds. And so, a decision has been made to allocate fewer of those dollars to street maintenance, and because we thought the higher gas tax would pay for that difference, and keep, you know, more fire stations open, more police officers on the street, adequate parks maintenance, those types of decisions.
More so, it was just, it's a matter of where we, as a city, want to put our funds, because I would consider streets core services as well, as water and sewer, but they're their own dedicated fund, whereas Fund 155 actually does some with streets. It's not a lock-in and everything goes there, stays there. We can supplement that in from the side as well.
Yeah.
So, just as far as total transparency on what we're talking about today.
All right. Councilor Dickey.
Thank you. Yes. I am wondering, do you have a project list? So, I was really struck by a lot of the, especially a lot of the emails we got, people said, and we heard it a little bit tonight, too, you know, I've been promised streetlights for 20 years. And I know you had mentioned that you kind of have a plan, that you would get the oldest neighborhoods first. Do you actually have a project list, so that at some point, if this went forward, someone would know that, okay, my street is on this list, and maybe it's halfway down the priority list, but I know it's going to happen, whether it's streetlights or sidewalks, or is that something you would have to put together?
Councilor, that's still something we have to put together. We, like I said, we've broached the idea of going into the older neighborhoods that are missing streetlights, and they happen to be mainly neighborhoods that have been annexed in from the counties since the 1940s or 50s, that, you know, streetlights were not required as a condition of development at that time. And so, just out of fairness, we feel like those are the neighborhoods that should get first priority for those funds, and then work our way out into the areas that most recently don't have streetlights. But we do not have a project list yet, because we simply don't have the financials in place to notice how far we could get in any given year.
All right. Councilor Bednarz.
I've been looking at one of my properties and looking at putting on the LED lighting. When the research that I did, the payback seemed to be three to four years that I would be getting back. The report does say seven to 10 years, or nine to 10 years payback on all that. From my point of view, it would be nice to know, what is the correct number? And it may be part, as a private individual, I can get tax credits through the Oregon Department of Energy, where the city can't get those same credits, which is, leads me to, obviously encourages me to convert. The question there is ultimately, is PGE is looking to reduce their, the demand for their electricity by, and the Oregon State of Oregon has implemented policies to do the same thing. Is there nothing that the city can take advantage of for getting, if not tax credits, because we're a nonprofit, but something else?
Well, if there are tax credits, we can, when the Betsy was around, if we do something that creates a tax credit, we can sell that tax credit in the open market. So, those are available to us if they are available. So, we will certainly research that. We are not aware of anything related to the relamping of streetlights. But there is something, because you made a comment earlier, Councilor, streetlights have, the ballast has to be replaced. I mean, this isn't just unscrewing a bulb and putting in a different bulb. So, there's a substantial additional expense, you know, unlike what you do at your home with just rebulbing. So, that's why it's, you know, more money than what you might be experiencing at your business. The other thing that I'd like to say is, you know, when Mr. Bechtel speaks of, you know, us wanting to maintain that fee at the base level for a very long time, you know, that payback, once it's established, or those savings, once they're established, you know, we want to make sure to carry that out for as long as we possibly can, to not have to be back asking for an increase. And, you know, the variable on that is always, you know, will electric rates jump up significantly, or the tariffs jump up significantly. But as long as they maintain at a pace that we've modeled, 3%, 4% increase a year, I forget what Mr. Lacy put in his model, then we can sustain that same rate for a very, very long time. And that's important to us, to promise that, and then live up to that.
Have you modeled the idea perhaps of, if that base fee, or if that fee was put in place, to retire the fee once the capital expenditures have been put in to put the bulbs in?
Well, no, because what capital doesn't pay for is the electric bill. So, that's really the underlying issue, is we still have to pay the monthly fee per pole for the electric bill and for maintaining it. So, it's not, if we could take out the relamping, and we still would have to propose a fee to pay for the month in, month out. I mean, the PGE and Salem Electric don't give away the streetlights. The city pays for the electricity. The gentleman here earlier spoke about doing a local improvement district to install streetlights. And we used to see a lot of those, whereby subdivision, people would come in and make the request, and we would help them put that together. But what they would pay, what he accurately portrayed, is what they paid for was the capital expense of installing the poles. Once the poles are in place, the city pays the monthly tariff on each of those poles forevermore.
This is the last question I might have here. A regular sodium, high-pressure sodium light bulb is a single filament, or whatever it is, cartridge inside that operates. An LED lamp is a series of small LEDs. And I've seen the individual LEDs burn out, as opposed to, certainly anybody's been to a traffic light can see it.
Yes.
You can see the pixelation of the, we've been using LEDs in the traffic lights for a long time. Technology, my concern is the technology. Is it there yet? Is this the time to take the jump in LED lights? Is it really there, or should we wait for the next generation?
That is a great question. I will tell you that we had a horror story with our original LED lamping of green lights on signals, where we had to, luckily, they were on warranty, and they all had to be replaced, because we had extreme failures. Our understanding, PGE has a laboratory. Our understanding from PGE is that they are now satisfied that what is on the market and what they recommend will last a long time. That's why they are willing to make the investment. But you're right. You know, it is still, it's aging technology, but it's still relatively new technology. And we would be very concerned about that, have been concerned about, you know, the long-term viability of the lamps. Our newer lamps on signals have lasted a much longer time. They are living up to our expectations. So, we would anticipate that the streetlights would do the same.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Councilor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam. Can staff bring back information on PGE's program to put essentially the equivalent of a streetlight in for a residential property? I know my neighbor had one, and we finally ended up getting rid of it. But it was like 80 bucks a year, and I split that with him. So, 40 bucks a year, here we're talking 48. And do they offer that in LED? And what do they charge a property owner to have that done? Because there's people who probably want streetlights and don't know about this program, where you could stick it at the front of your property and split the cost with four neighbors and pay 20 bucks, depending on what they're charging now.
Councilor, we'll get you the information. I will say that the way PGE does that is one customer is responsible.
Right.
We have heard stories of, everybody pays the first month, and over time, it deteriorates, and the one person that put it on their bill ends up paying. So, just, that's the way that program works. But we'll get you the information on what it costs, and it is available.
But people can make a contractual agreement with their neighbor just by signing a piece of paper and taking them to small claims court if they don't do that. So, I mean, there's ways to make an agreement. I mean, that's how we used to run the world. Typically, it was like this, though.
Okay. All right. I believe there are no more questions for staff, and I would entertain a motion. Councilor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the proposed streetlight and neighborhood street maintenance fee be referred back to staff for consideration of the comments and suggestions from the oral and written testimony we received to date, and that staff meet with stakeholders to review all strategies to address the funding shortfall in street maintenance, and that the public hearing be closed with the expectation that if this issue reappears on our agenda, a new public hearing on this issue will be called.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilor Bennett and seconded by Councilor Tesler. Is there discussion? Councilor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, as I was just looking at this over the course of time, and I talked to Councilor Bednarz the other day, as far as, you know, because I don't necessarily like it, on whether or not to refer it out to the public for a vote. And then it was like, but I'm pretty sure the voters would say no, and so, that's a waste of time and effort. So, I appreciate the, you know, motion to at least take it back and see if there's something else we could do. I would like to see if, in fact, we can't put it in this bond measure, what would it take to actually put one out just for the capital portion, and then figure out how we deal with, you know, ongoing maintenance and electricity costs as well, and what the cost of a standalone bond measure would be, just for the LED conversion.
All right. Further discussion? Councilor Tesler.
Yeah, I'd like to take a moment and thank Mark Bechtel. He really went above and beyond. As far as I can tell, him and three other people were the public information thing for this whole, and I sent Mark Bechtel an email on Saturday at midnight, and would often get a reply. So, I think that's bad, Mark Bechtel, that you would reply to my email at midnight. So, but I would just really like, I mean, and we got a lot of email. And Mark really took the time to personally answer people's questions and spend the time with you. And to the people that sent good email, I thank you. It's very good to read people's email where they have suggestions, and not just an angry buzz, because there's not too much you can do with that. But I can do something when you send me an email with suggestions. I can ask staff to help you and get back to you. So, for those of you sent good email, I thank you, and I responded to a lot of you who did send good email. But Mark Bechtel and his crew, thank you very, very much.
Yeah, I'd like to add my thanks to that as well, because I know that Mr. Bechtel and other staff were out at neighborhood association meetings and homeowners' association meetings, and really spent evening after evening after evening. And then I'd see them here bright and early the next mornings. And I know that thorough information to the public is really necessary on this issue. I think we have a way to go to actually achieve that. But I, it's not been through any lack of the staff's effort to get the information out. And I want to acknowledge that. Thank you. Councilor Nanki, can you grab your hand up?
Yeah, and it's not only Mark Bechtel, but Mr. Lacy as well. I mean, we, this is a very complex issue. And having seen one of the neighborhood association presentation, and neighborhood associations always have a specific timeline, which I think we went two and a half times over that, and it was still not enough for people to understand it. But we had, what, maybe three Finance Committee meetings going through and modifying numbers on graphs to see what the impact is, to putting commercial and industrial this, multifamily here, and then cost savings crossover versus ongoing maintenance costs, where you looked out at the 10-year crossover and questioned the, what's the word I'm looking for? PGE's estimates, or our estimates on what PGE bills might go, based on, you know, necessarily skyrocketing energy costs, don't say 3% a year. It says screamer jumps, what happens in that case. And so, we ran a lot of numbers. It is massively complex. I don't know if you'll ever be able to get people to understand what it is, but I know we talked about, how do we communicate with voters in Salem? And I think we figured out postcards get a lot of response.
No.
Yes.
Okay. I think that we have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. So, the public hearing is now closed, and we will... is now closed and we will hear back from staff at a date that we have not yet specified. I'd like to say thank you to the audience, to everyone who came tonight. And thank you for the clarity in your testimony, the courtesy you showed to one another and to the staff and the council. It really means a tremendous amount to us to have that kind of feedback from the public. It truly makes a difference. And what the time you spent down here this evening made a difference. And I hope that you recognize that. Thanks very much. We're going to take a little break here so people can exit and we'll stretch our legs a little. Then we have a tiny bit of, teeny tiny bit of work to do. Okay. We're going to go back into our session and we only have a couple things on the agenda. And it looks to me like we have no special orders of business or unfinished business. We do have some information reports that I want to draw your attention to. They're in your packet plus the addition of one that came out today, the modifications to the establishment of a railroad quiet zone. So it's number seven E as in every train that comes through town. Counselor Tesler.
Thank you. I just wanted to speak to this recommendations on page four of this report. I'm a little concerned about the scrambling of the order here because it seems like everything that was in Ward Two is now being sort of relegated to the bottom of the list rather than the top. Now, I know that Hind Street.
I'm sorry, Counselor Tesler, which page are you on?
Page four.
Oh, which report are you on? I guess I better ask you that.
Seven A, Dole was released today.
Yeah.
Oh, seven A?
Yeah.
The purchases report?
No, seven E.
Seven A. Oh, the quiet zone. Yeah, seven E. Okay.
Okay, sorry.
Mine doesn't look like yours.
No, mine's written on.
No. Mine definitely doesn't look like yours. I wonder if I don't, anyway, all right.
Okay, so it's signed by Mark Bechtel and it has some bullets and it lists some streets starting with Hind Street Southeast. Now, I realize that the crossing yard is at Hind Street Southeast. And I realize that that one is going to be a struggle. But I really, I mean, Hind Street Southeast and has been kind of an issue in Ward Two for a long, long time because of that crossing yard, because of the effect that it has on the neighborhood there. And it would just be, I don't know. I would hate to see these two, Ward Two, I think McGill Crest is in Ward Two and then Madrona is yours. So I guess I would just hate to see them fall by the wayside. So that would be my only comment. And if that's not what's going to happen, I stand corrected.
The first would be that.
Well, it says that of the above crossings, most difficult crossing to undertake safety improvements is crossing at Hind Street Southeast, which will require substantial and expensive modifications.
I'm sorry. Excuse me, Counselor Tesler. Counselor Bennett is getting my attention.
Are you done?
Yes.
So is it clear then what's happened here? I mean, that's maybe the question I've got is maybe we better have clarified what happened here. Because seeing this, it isn't a reshuffle. It's a completion of the first deal. And that's what we want to get done. And then the next deal comes along. But this isn't a reshuffle of the deck at all, as I understood it. Okay. Can Mr. Bechtel explain it?
Yes, this is his night.
Yes, lucky me. Mark Bechtel, Parks and Transportation Services Manager. Yes, counselors, this became a last minute, right before the holiday issue that came up. And I'll very briefly explain what happened. But essentially, there were new staff that looked over our railroad quiet zone at the Omaha headquarters of Union Pacific Railroad. They found essentially a catch-22 between the two federal rules. One federal rule says that a train must sound its horn as it approaches an act grade crossing within a quarter mile of that crossing depending upon its speed. Another federal rule says that if you are within a quiet zone, you may not, you are prohibited from routinely sounding your horn while within the boundaries of that quiet zone. And what we have is a situation at the north end of the intended quiet zone where Woodrow Street, which is outside of the quiet zone as we proposed it, is only a tenth of a mile north of Sunnyview Road, which is the end of the quiet zone as we've proposed it. And so what's happening, or what would happen, is as a northbound train is exiting the quiet zone, it would have to be sounding its horn in advance of Woodrow. And it would be sounding its horn inside of the quiet zone as it's exiting. It's the only occurrence that that happens. And that was brought up, we actually knew about this conflict a couple of years ago. And at that time, none of the entities, Union Pacific Railroad, O.R.T. Rail, Federal Rail Administration, nobody thought that was an issue because the train was exiting the quiet zone. However, under further examination, Federal Rail Administration agrees with Union Pacific Railroad that it puts their engineers in a catch-22 where they could be fined for blowing their horns within the boundaries of the quiet zone. And so the interpretation from Federal Rail is that we essentially can't end a quiet zone unless there's at least a quarter of a mile between the end of the quiet zone and the next act grade crossing. So just north of Woodrow is Silverton Road, .24 miles north of Woodrow. If you go south, you're into Madison. Madison is not a quarter of a mile from Sunnyview. So the next break is at Market. And so what the Federal Railroad Administration is willing to approve and Union Pacific as well is to, for us to establish a quiet zone on July 23rd, which was our notice of establishment date, but only for the crossings between and including Mill Street through Market Street. So that's eight of the 10 crossings. It shortens the quiet zone officially by six tenths of a mile. But again, because the southbound trains don't have to sound their horns within a quarter mile of Market, it does, it extends your quiet another quarter of a mile. So, you know, you're now, you're about three tenths of a mile or more of less quiet. But, you know, this came as a shock to us. We've been so careful as staff to dot every I and cross every T. And we've received lots of apologies from all the agencies involved. They're essentially allowing us to establish this quiet zone with less than 21 days' notice. We're sending out the amended notice of establishment tomorrow because they want to make it right. So where that leaves us, counselors, is, you know, what's our next step? And I think this is where Counselor Tesler, you were getting to, is, you know, what would be council's next action in regards to a quiet zone? You do have the ability to allocate future bond savings as they become available to projects like the quiet zone. When we had the Citizens Task Force in place, the recommendations that you brought out and that are on page three and four of the quiet zone reflect what the, what that committee was thinking. But at that time, of course, they didn't know they were going to lose two crossings to a catch-22 in the rule. to a catch-22 in the rule. And so one of the things that council could consider is doing the next phase of the quiet zone to include improvements at Woodrow, Silverton Road, and then while you're at it, you might as well do Hyacinth because Hyacinth is already almost there. There's not a lot of improvements that need to be made at Silverton or Hyacinth, but the focus would be Woodrow. And Woodrow's difficult to some degree because of some industrial access. And it might be expensive because we may have to put up four quadrant gates. Or we might be able to remove a railroad spur and that makes things a lot easier. But there's expense there. Another option would be to allocate additional bond savings and take care of your crossings to the south as well. Madrona Avenue, those improvements could be folded into the project that council's already allocated bond funds, bond saving funds to. So that'd take care of Madrona. McGillcrest is a decision that council would have to consider because we don't have the improvements to McGillcrest, you know, planned within the next five years or more. So the question is, would you want to construct some throwaway improvements, not very expensive, but improvements that would have to be torn out in the future to fully develop McGillcrest. But in the meantime, you would qualify for the quiet zone. The issue comes down to what do you want to do at Hines? And Hines is millions of dollars to get a quiet zone crossing there, completely quiet. You could put in a wayside horn, which is a focused sound with much less ambient, you know, sound. The wayside horns are focused and you're going to have switching horns anyway. The FRA made that very clear, that when trains are switching, they blow their horns they're required to. It's only the through trains that do not have to blow their horns in the quiet zone. So you know, those are some things that council needs to consider. When you consider how you want to allocate your next round of bond savings as to whether you want to allocate them to just do the three crossings to the north, so you can now get five crossings to finish the quiet zone there, or add money to finish out the whole set. So that's something you're going to need to consider.
Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I had enough time to actually read that. Woodrow, what is the previous crossing to it?
No, Sunnyview. From the south, it's Sunnyview, then Woodrow, then Silverton. And there's a tenth of a mile between...
Which is our last one that has an actual improved crossing? Sunnyview?
We made improvements to Sunnyview and to Madison. So the improvements are there. It's just we have a spacing problem.
Correct. But can you not then say, my quiet zone is actually going to fall here, which is not at a crossing? Because it sounds like by having to take it all the way back to Market, you have one more that you could have them not blow their horn at if you're not looking at the next intersection and you just brought the quiet zone into in-between streets.
We asked Federal Rail that question and it's really crossing to crossing because it's based on when, for what reason, they have to blow their horn. So it has to do with the speed they're traveling and the quarter mile distance. And what our Federal Rail Administration representative said was, you really need to have a quarter mile distance from the last quiet crossing to the next crossing. If anything less than that, you're going to violate the rule of the crossing, the rule of the quiet.
So Marketing has a quarter mile to the next one.
Yeah.
Which is?
Madison.
Madison. So Madison does not have a quarter mile to?
To Sunnyview.
Sunnyview, which is improved. And then there's Woodrow. Is there a quarter mile between that and Woodrow?
No, that's .24 miles between Woodrow. And we just missed it by that much. Okay.
Can we warp space in time?
Counselors, I mean, I talked to Alan Scott today...
Is that linear? Can we build a couple of just moguls?
Counselor, I talked to Alan Scott today, who, you know, chaired the task force and who happens to live off of Madison.
Excellent.
Who was not very happy today.
No, and I can see that because now you're going to have it quiet and you're not going to know it's coming. And it's going to go boom, right in your head where you didn't expect it before. We may actually end up with a lot more complaints than we had before for that reason.
Hence we do this part, the north part.
Hence we need to look at getting the rest of the system done.
Right.
Counselors, we think that we, as far as getting the north part done, we think we can get it done for you for a million dollars or less. The south part, I don't have an estimate for in my head at the moment, but let's just say another million or less. So for... Well, if you do the wayside horn, if you want to make it absolutely quiet, now you're talking probably, you know, another $2 million. Because you literally have to move the switching yard to make that work. Okay.
And if I could, they're never going to be absolutely quiet. If a train sees a pedestrian or somebody coming, they're still going to blow their horn.
They don't have to. If they feel a threat, they will.
That's right.
Counselor, to be honest with you, it's very difficult to maintain a quiet zone through a switching yard. It just is. So one of the things that you'll need to consider as a council is, you know, are you willing to put up with maybe a focused horn sound that comes out of the wayside horn?
Definitely.
As opposed to...
As far as the cost.
As far as working with Union Pacific Railroad, which have been fairly good to work with on this project, but imagine the difficulties and the time it'll take to move their switching yard.
If I could just add on top of that, because inside of the switching yard, and I can hear them because, you know, we talked about trains earlier in our work session, and we're a significant distance away from that. And it's screaming loud, the way it comes up the hill to us. But I can hear them in the switching yard and it's not the way it is as they're cruising through town, which is some guy who just decides he wants to pull down or push whatever it is and keep it down. It's more of a toot-toot, you know, like you polite honk on your horn to somebody versus blaring horn when you're road rage at somebody. That's the difference between those two occurrences. So a wayside horn with some beep-beeps inside of the switching yard is nothing compared to an active... And I talked to one of the folks at the railroads and they said typically that person that you hear doing that had basically killed someone in the very recent past, which is just a shame. It's one job where you're guaranteed almost to kill someone in your profession over the course of your career, which is sad.
Counselor Bennett, did you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. What then, in order to achieve the full program, what's the timeline look like to complete this?
For the north part, we feel we can get it done within two years. That's, I know that sounds like a lot of time, but again, we have to work with the railroad. We have to go through the process. Luckily, the two of the five crossings are already done. So it's just a matter of doing the three other ones. If we could do it in less time, we certainly could try to do that. But remember, our engineering staff is busy doing a lot of projects right now.
Right.
If you want to just finish out the city, we would try to, you know, take advantage of that economy of time and just try to get it all done, as long as you're not talking moving the whole yard at Hines.
How will that then come to us? When will we see that so we can approve going ahead with this or whatever we end up doing?
I would like the Public Works Director to answer that question.
So it's, as Counselor Nanki says, we will go to the Streets and Bridges Subcommittee, councilors Nanki, Clausen, and Clem. We will recommend that they allocate some of the savings, at least, and we can have that discussion there. Do we want to proceed with the north? Do we want to proceed with the north and the south? Because it's really just money. And then it'll come to council for approval and then we'll move full steam ahead on the quiet zone. But it takes, you know, there, you know, once the money's approved, then there's process with the railroad issues and then there's design for us to get, designing construction for us to get done.
But to move this along, will you probably be looking at horns at Hines and at Woodrow because of the industrial nature of the Woodrow site?
We're going to look, I think at Hines, we are pretty well set that wayside horns are really the...
Which is pretty quick.
Really the only answer.
Yeah.
Woodrow is, we have to look at it and see what is possible. I think there's a whole range of opportunities that are, that may be possible there. Madrona, we're going to already be under construction with the Norpac piece, so we'll add that. That's adding the medians at Madrona won't, you know, so then it's really just, you know, we feel that Hyacinth is the same. The sidewalks are already there. So there are a lot of easy ones. So what's left then is McGillcrest. And we'll just have to make a decision. Do we want to go ahead and install and wait for the McGill, you know, install what we can. McGillcrest project will tear it out, but at least we can proceed with the quiet zone.
And then, Counselor, I might add that one of the things that took a lot of time with this first phase was not putting in medians. That was not the time. It was all the pedestrian safety improvements and the curb work and additional signal work with the railroads because we have additional pedestrian signals. As you get further away from downtown, you may not need to have as much of all of that. And like Peter said, Silverton and Hyacinth already have ADA compliant sidewalks. And so anywhere that we can find work that's already done, that'll, that can move the process along more quickly.
Well, great. I just would encourage that this go along very quickly. This really, I know for Mr. Scott was very disappointing. I received an email from him. But for all of his neighbors, it is going to be wildly disappointing because I think we have so long promised this was coming. And I think people were somewhat losing faith and then listening to the comments tonight about sidewalks and other things where there is a perceived or real promise that it's coming. I'm just hopeful that we can find the money and also move along as rapidly as possible. I think it is just one of those unfortunate realities of dealing with large institutions. So thank you.
On behalf of staff, I mean, I can't tell you the pittance in my stomach that I felt when I got the phone call late, middle of last week. We were so close.
Yeah.
And to have, you know, a new engineer in Omaha, Nebraska, on the ninth floor of their headquarters, willing to say, but wait, it was, it was really hard on staff. So we are also just as sad as Alan Scott, believe me. We are.
Counselor Nanki, did you have your hand up?
Yes, if I may, just in regards to McGillcrest, cost of improvement that would be ripped out versus cost of a wayside horn as an interim, which then we would be able to just have as a backup wayside horn for the Hines crossing, wouldn't that be the logical way to look at that intersection and tell it's a...
We'll look at all of that. Yeah, we'll look at all of that and just see what makes the, you know, similar to Woodrow, we'll see what makes the most sense. You know, we also want to, I think we can take great pride as a community that we have done safety improvements at all of these things. And I think that's important, given our history and given the volume of train travel through our, train movement through our, through our community. So we've done it absolutely correctly and I think we want to continue to do that within the limitations of the budget. So we'll take a look and see what we can do.
Because if you look at McGillcrest, it's almost the same as Hines in a way. While they're switching, they're blocking that off back and going back and forth, back and forth. If we put in a wayside horn, do we have to do anything else to that intersection? Or that crossing?
No, because they're still sounding their horn. You just don't have the ambient, you don't have that...
A horn is being sounded. It's not from the engine. It's from the crossing.
It's a fixed horn that sounds in a very focused, you know, sound.
So I mean, if we really wanted to rust something and have a significant decrease, we could do that to all five. Then the conductor wouldn't have to, the engineer wouldn't have to worry about pull at this one, not at that one. He just drives through in the intersections, do whatever it is at a fairly modest cost from there.
So we'll look at all of those options and bring it back to the council committee.
Yeah, the Streets and Bridges Bond Committee, I think, meets in a couple of weeks.
In July.
So this is July. So we'll see if we can have at least some preliminary things in place, you know, some investigations and some thoughts that we can talk to the committee about and see if we can get this thing rolling a lot faster.
Counselor Benars.
Weren't there recent improvements to the sidewalk on McGillcrest on the north side of the street that is, I've seen the sidewalk now. You can get to the Social Security Office.
Right.
Is it not ADA?
Oh, yeah, it's fully ADA.
So you don't have to do...
No, the issue there, no, the issue there is the median that we would want to do obviously wouldn't survive the ultimate improvement of the street.
Can't be much of a median. It's not very wide road at that point.
Right.
Oh, yeah, it'd be interesting.
Yeah. It just has to be a certain length and, you know, we try to be as efficient as we can. And so that's, we'll look at all the options and take it up with the committee here.
The median makes cost less than the wayside horn. So we'll look at all that.
All right. Any further discussion on information reports? All right, and there are no ordinances this evening, either first or second reading. There's no one left to sign up for public comment that I'm aware of. And no new business, no mayor's items or counselor items. We are adjourned.